Well, true.
Not tied today.
Can I start?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, August second, twenty twenty-three. Meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. On Wednesday, March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Governor Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three. An act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Which includes a two-year option, extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings. By suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Act Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately. Extending the current option for remote meetings through. March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm going to ask everyone to rise and join me in salute to flag.
Congratulations.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing. Um, I have a sad duty today. To announce, uh. That Barry Hannan of Braintree. Passed away over the weekend, I believe down in Cape Cod. Um. This is a particularly, uh, close. Agreements for us because Barry served. Um, the county for thirty years as our registered deeds from nineteen seventy to not two thousand and one. Barry leaves behind his wife Deborah. Amy Hannan Baron of Queens, of Situage, his daughter. Barry Junior. And Catherine Hannan. Barry was a Holy Cross grad, a BU Law School grad. A Milton native who settled in Braintree with his wife Deborah. A veteran of the USAF Force. A Vietnam-era veteran. And started his law firm with his brother-in-law Joe Hurley, who also is known to all of us in the county. Um, in Braintree. He was elected state representative in nineteen sixty-six. He served two terms. During this. Tenure in the great general court, he was chairman of the House Bills and Third Reading Committee. In nineteen seventy, he was appointed by. The county commissioners as registered deeds to take the place of Thomas Shine. Who passed away while he was the registered deeds. Uh, Barry was. Known as a consummate gentleman. He was a. A very, very good golfer. And, uh, everyone who. Traveled and knew Barry, uh. Admired him very much. I'm going to ask, uh, any commissioners that want to say anything, but I know Commissioner Collins. Uh, served actually with Barry here. And Commissioner Collins's. Father may have been the chairman Barry was appointed, I believe.
Yeah.
So it's pretty close. So I want to, anything we do today, we do in memory of our friend Barry Hannan. Commissioner Collins.
Um, I just want to say that in serving as county commissioner, um, while Barry was. Registered deeds, it was a, it was a joy to work with him. He was a good friend. He always, uh, was very helpful to the county commissioners and he appreciated any help that we could give him. Um, as Joe said, he was a gentleman. And, uh, everyone loved Barry and they love working for him.
Thank you.
I would want to, uh, say politely is that my dealings as an attorney. And even on the advisory board, uh, he was a consummate gentleman, a true gentleman in all respects and. Our condolences to his family for the loss.
Okay, so at the adjournment of today's meeting, we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of our, our registered deeds, uh, Barry Hannan. Thank you. Item number one, call to order has been done. No, item number two, roll call, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, President.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shay is present. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of July twenty-sixth.
Uh, I'll move, I'll move the minutes. Motion.
Motion second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
Uh, there were minutes from the week before, we're, we're going to hold them again.
Oh, one more. Okay.
All right, great. Okay.
Number four, appointments, we have none. Number five, public comment. Each week we have a lot, uh, uh, an item on our agenda of calling for public comment. If anyone wants to come in and speak to us or wants to comment on the Zoom, but now is the time to do it. Um, Director Corin, do you, have you heard from anyone about public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go to number six, old business. I have none. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to move the following. These have to do with the Norfolk County. Agricultural High School. I'll take a few at a time. There's four resignations. I believe these are, uh, of various types of, uh, employment. Uh, notice of resignation, Brianna Corey of Somerset as a one hundred eighty-three day instructor. For the rate stated, effective eight twenty-five. A notice of resignation Amelia Jermaine of Oxbridge, Mass, a student worker summer camp. Uh, effective seven twenty-six twenty-three. Notice of resignation of Erica Goldoski of Canton, student worker summer camp, effective seven twenty-six twenty-three. And notice of resignation for Elizabeth Delara of West Welton as a student worker, effective seven twenty-six twenty-three. I'll move those as a group for approval.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Next one is the notice of contingency employment for David Devau of Norwood. As a substitute instructor, uh, for the rate stated, effective eight twenty-nine twenty-three. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And then the following group will take as a one motion, Mr. Chairman, we have permission.
Yes.
A notice of regrade for the following individuals. These are all the following for notice of regrade. Jeffrey Thompson of Stoughton for one hundred eighty-three day instructor. Uh, I believe they're all effective eight twenty-eight twenty-three also. A notice of regrade for Thomas McNamara of West Bridgewater. Uh, notice of regrade of Laura Tetchikazizian of Waltham. Uh, notice of, uh, regrade for Kyle Roos of Quincy. Notice of regrade for Michelle Fedley of Newton. And notice of regrade of Gina Als of Taunton. These are all one eighty-three day instructors. For the rate stated in the memo and an all effective date eight twenty-three, eight twenty-eight twenty-three. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman.
One at Wallace.
Yes, sir. With your permission. Wallaston Golf Course, I have noticed a contingency employment for Abe, uh, Robertson of Milton. Uh, at the Pro Shop, seasonal employee, effective date, uh, for the rate stated, effective date eight-two twenty-three. So moved. So moved.
Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No.
Number eight, payroll and expense.
Okay, it's right here. Right. All right. Uh, we'll move, Mr. Chairman, the following for approval. For the county payroll twenty-four dash four, the amount of one hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars, fifty-two cents. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
County expense, uh, moving, uh, line items oh-eight dash oh-one twenty-four, uh, for August first. Five hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars, seventy-nine cents. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Uh, for the Norfolk Aggie expense, uh, twenty-four dash oh-two, move the amount one hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars, nine cents. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And we have an opera award, uh, move the opera award twenty-four dash oh-five, the amount of one million. One hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving right along. Number nine, report of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Director Corin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this afternoon, commissioners, you have one award. For you. It's a substantial one to the, um, town of Braintree. Um, this reimbursement, um, to the town of Braintree totals one million, one hundred. Ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, it relates to reimbursements back to the town, um, for expenditures incurred during the COVID pandemic, um, that impacted. Um, the community of Braintree from public health to public safety. Um, this particular award is not Braintree's first, I believe we have. With today's award, um, Norfolk County has reached a, a level of eighty-four point one million dollars and money's out the door. Um, there are approximately two million dollars worth of additional grants that are in the queue for upcoming meetings. Um, this afternoon, I understand there may be. An individual on your Zoom from, uh, Braintree. I don't know if Lorraine wants to address us, but we've reached out to. The town to find out if they're interested in any public presentation of large check or. Uh, anything along that lines. Lorraine, if you can hear me, if you're interested in making any remarks. Um, with the commissioners at this time, that would be great. We also look forward to the opportunity to come to Braintree, present a large check.
All right, so. Is there anyone from Braintree on the Zoom tonight?
Too bad.
Okay, I believe they are interested in having some sort of public presentation spoken about. And Charlie Ryan has mentioned to me, so. Let's put that in the queue and see if we can arrange for it.
Great. Maybe we do so.
Okay, do you want to take a separate vote on that or we already?
Uh, you already voted the opera, um, and I've explained the particular grant before you.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
It'd be good that we could answer them then maybe. Before we have the presentation. I read the application packet. And, uh, we're glad to get the money. It is quite a bit. But it seemed kind of vague to me. It had like, I just said, a reimbursement of ongoing workshops. Having to do with criminal increase. Can we get some backup as to what they're actually, is this, no, is this money funding the police? Or is this money, it says community health, but it said increase in crime and violence. So. It'd be helpful to us to see where that money's going.
That information is available.
Yeah.
Part of the backup that's in the portal. I reviewed all of the attachment. There are approximately eight payrolls. That, uh, roll up this value on behalf of Braintree's expenses associated primarily with. Uh, deflection of violence in public health. Their payroll records, Commissioner, and people might happen to show them to you if you want. But they're all reimbursements to expenses the town had already incurred.
So this is reimbursement for stuff we've done?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Strictly payroll.
Did they know we were going to be reimbursing them? Did they put, do these projects with the hope they'd get reimbursed?
Can't say that's true.
Yeah.
But the grant does, uh, enable that. Uh, we have done a, a number of different reimbursements, especially related to. Um, public, usually public health expenses or payroll expenses during the pandemic, but it is, it is a.
Okay. I'd be curious to get a look at some of those later. No big deal. It's fine. Glad to get in the money. It's. It's just that when I looked at the face of the, uh, the document, it's just so vague. It's from workshops and things.
You, um, you don't, in your packets, you only get the application with the description of what the award is for. Um, every single application has. Anywhere from one to one hundred pages of backup, Commissioner. They, a lot of the grants have extensive backup. That's the. Built-in feature of the portal. It can handle all of the material associated with each grant application. That's not forwarded to you, but it's certainly available to upon requests. We have to show it to you anytime.
Right.
It's part of our audit record as well.
I will make, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was referring to that packet that came out from. The county for.
That's amazing. Yeah. That's pretty extensive too.
I haven't yet. I just can't fool with John.
I can't say I've read all that yet.
All right.
Right.
Okay, this concludes opera for, for today. We, number ten is opera warrants. We did that.
Right.
For Braintree. Number eleven, fiscal year rules and regulations, personnel bulletin.
So, good afternoon, commissioners. This afternoon, you're going to hear from Nancy, uh, Rockwell, our procurement manager. She's going to. Explain to you some changes to the county's purchasing rules and regulations. Um, it's that time of the year when we review a lot of our policies against the brief board those changes. It also complements, um, some of the other chi, uh, policies that the commissioners will be seeing over the next several weeks. Uh, following Nancy, you'll be hearing from CIO Sam Evans on a proposed technology policy for the county. Uh, this afternoon, however, the one that Nancy has before you, um, we would like your approval on. Is to be a vote. Sam's will be introduced to you for consideration in the, uh, future.
And these rules and regulations.
Yep, these are.
We do them every year.
We do.
That's true. Okay, Nancy? The motion's here. Under Sam. Yes. Slow dance, have a seat.
How are you? Does everybody have a copy?
We do. Here we have a memorandum for you dated August first, purchasing rules and regulations, the yearly requirement.
Yes.
Nancy, explain it. Thank you.
Um, this year, some changes were made. I've added into our regular. Regulations. I put, everything was in red. I put in a category for use of mass state contracts. Collective purchasing and collaborative contracts. Explained the use of all three to the departments. So they may have a better understanding of the requirements to use these. And I just expanded upon the labor industries, um. Just that if federal funds are being used for a project, the Davis Bacon wages will be paid to the contractor. And I just expanded on vendors' listed qualifications for vendors who are not debarr'd by the federal government or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for contract awards. And I just also included a certificate of non collusion and a conflict of interest statement. Section N. And then I expanded on the contract substitutions. And then we get into appendix A, which was basically determined by DESI last year. Um, they found we were lacking for. Rules and, uh, regulations for federal funding. So appendix A was added to address everything that they. Want us to have in place for federal grants and federal funding.
Any questions from Nancy? Director Corin, please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Nancy for putting this together. It's important that our policies are updated regularly. One item that she just referenced, which will also be related to our FY twenty-one audit when we get it. Um, refers to the, um, opinion that the way the county handles federal grants needs to be tied to the. It won't be circulars and guidelines provided by the feds. So this, um, inclusionary language not ju, doesn't just benefit the DESI recommendations. But it touches upon what you will hear as a finding in our upcoming audit that the county needed to connect more towards, um. The Office of, uh, Budgets O M Bs Circulus for Grant Management. So. It's a good, it's a good add to our policies and, uh. This will also be placed on our website along with the other policies for everyone to see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Commissioner Stady?
Yeah, I have a few.
Sure.
If you don't mind. So, uh, this is pretty significant. Significant work, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Um. Did you take some of this from other documents? Is it from like?
For the.
Other counties or other states or?
What I did was for the, well. Our rules and regulations, we've had the years and years. I just expanded upon them.
Hmm.
And I know we might be using some of the opera money for projects here.
Hmm.
Which would call in for like the Davis Bacon wages, so I inserted that in.
Inserted that.
Um, and then for the majority of the federal. Federal gra, uh, federal grants, federal funding, I got from the. Federal O M Bs online and took language from that.
Good. Okay. So a couple of things, real quick, again, complimentary, but just in trying to, you know, make sure I'm comfortable with it. Um, so that's anticipating federal money, which we added to, right, with opera. And secondly, because of the audit report, we were lacking, right, or DESI. DESI cited us in terms of some things we could.
DESI made a recommendation.
Really many.
Similarly, and in parallel, the audit is, is viewing the county's handling of the CARES money received in FY twenty-four.
So I see DESI. And I read where we think about the AGGIE too.
Hmm.
So the AGGIE will come onto this guideline.
Yeah, Corin and I worked on a lot of this together.
Good. Okay, good. You answered that question. All right, the only trouble I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm directing this to you. On page eleven. End. Certificate of Non-Collusion, Conflict of Interest. Uh, it says it'll be. The decision of the county director. If the purchase is approved. I'd like to see if maybe. We could have that subject to approval by the commissioners. I mean, shouldn't that always be ratified by us? So we're signing away the authority to the director on that. Just the way, it struck me kind of funny. Just it's director has final approval. And I thought the commissioners had final approval. On purchases. You see what I'm talking about?
You know, not an end?
End. It's an end. It's an end. It's in red.
It's.
It's second paragraph. At the very end. So it's new. It just says it will be the decision of the county director if the purchase is approved. And I was going to add. Subject to. You know, approval from the county commissioners.
I've added it new into the rules and regulations here just to. Bring into the, bring into, um, conflict, but we've always had this as our certificate of non collusion. That's always been the cat, the county director's discretion, but.
Been that way?
Yes.
Yeah. Well.
That's up to you.
See that. That's why I wanted to bring it up. That's all. If it's past practice. And you guys are comfortable, then that's fine. If it's something new. I just thought, you know, we should be the final say on it. I'm just raising the point. That's all I'm doing.
Um, the commissioners approve, um. The, the warrant, which is an endorsement of all expend, planning expenditures and, and salaries and contracts and so forth.
Hmm.
Before it reaches you, there has to be. A level of, um. Review, if you call it balls and strikes. Is this procurement eligible to afford or such? And that's the level this is speaking about.
Okay.
Is the purchase eligible to proceed?
Okay.
So.
But you still sign off on it.
Okay.
It's a level that effectively protects the commissioners from having to deal with that kind of, uh, scrutiny.
Yeah.
Decision-making.
Okay, I appreciate that.
The intent.
Okay, good, good. That's fine. All right, one last thing. Um, as far as you know, is any of this language here conflict with like prevailing wage laws and those kinds of things?
Everything like all our thresholds are currently with the state of mass purchasing thresholds.
Okay.
Um, wages is directly from. Effectively, we should work on the wage.
When you're comfortable with this document going forward?
Yes.
All right. Hey, what's that note for a collection? All right, really great job. We just wanted to, you know, get some things cleared up.
Okay.
All right. We'd like to vote.
On our, uh. Purchasing rules and regulations under. Under, uh, item number, you know, if you can believe this policy review, this is the first of two we're doing today.
So it'd be a move, approval of the proposed purchasing rule and regulation. As presented by our chief procurement officer, this date. And with all the following changes and additions incorporated here and. Of their end. Was that?
FY twenty-four.
FY twenty-four. Okay.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, can I ask the, uh, commissioners approval to stamp this, uh, policy approved once we've met and properly put up on our website?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, yep.
Good job. Second one.
Nancy, could you send me the following?
I'm listening.
Thank you.
Second one under, uh. It's our policy review, IT policy review, item number twelve. We have a whole package here.
Yep.
Look at you.
Yeah.
Come on in. Good afternoon.
More reading.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
On a summer day.
Anyone need to just explain this?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I could briefly.
Go ahead.
Um, as I mentioned at the outset, uh, this is the season of, um, policies. You just approved the, as you have in the past, the procurement rules. Uh, for the county for FY twenty-four. That's great. That'll go up on our website. Um, we have before you this afternoon, the first. Uh, consolidated information technology draft IT policy for the county. Uh, Sam has put a lot of work into drafting this product in the last two to three months, something like that. Uh, sourcing a number of different areas to Commissioner Stady's interest. Where does this data come from? He'll explain that. In addition to the policy, there are several attachments and endorsement forms that complement policies. To make sure that employees read them, understand them, um, those acknowledgement forms will be part of the personnel file going forward. But before you today is a proposed policy, which you'll briefly go over. I just want to alert you, you'll not be drafting, or excuse me, recommending a vote on this, this week. This is draft. We want you to be comfortable, read it this week. We'll introduce it publicly to all the department heads today. And they'll be given some time to respond back to Sam with any questions. So administratively, it's setting up that this, this is the next policy you'll see. Uh, more will follow. The HR policy is right behind us. So, uh, that's my intro, Mr. Chairman. I yield to Mr. Evans.
Thank you. So I.
Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't imagine that you had a chance to look through it. So we're not going to get into too many of the. Real details in here, but we'll go over the form of it and everything. And as the director alluded to. This is a combination of sources here. The consultants who went over the employee handbook. Wrote some of it. I went to many different sites on the internet, universities and other government handbooks and. Just IT sites to find, um, suggestions for what's in here. So it's a conglomeration of things. Our deputy CIO, Dan Caparata, did a lot of looking at it and the county director also helped me with a lot of, uh, stuff in here. So you'll see it. And as the director said. You have some time. We're going to say initially a week to look this over. Let me know if you have any questions or any corrections to it. Anything you see in there is missing or egregious, you take a look at it. I can tell you that. I've looked at it so many times that, uh, I did not look at it yesterday. And so with just one day's break, I've already found a few things that I need to fix it. So, uh, as I, as I take a look through here, I'll let you know, like, for instance, the very last. Thing on the very last page, which is violations and penalties, I think that's, um, possibly in the wrong place. So there'll be things in here you look through and say, what's that? What's this? So we, we have, we know there's things to fix in addition to the formatting, which will change a little bit because as you look through, you'll see. That font is different. So we're going to clean up some stuff. But your input is really for content or for anything that you would like to add or that's sticking out to you. Um. And as we take a, uh, look at it, there are six sections. The first one is, uh, an explanation of. The IT department. That's department administration. The other five are a lot more technical. So as we say, when you're looking at the little org chart that's here, and I'm sorry, it's small. It's what happens on. Microsoft Word, we do have a couple of things to fix there. We don't have a, for instance, the very last blue box on the bottom there, Veteran Services. We don't. Have that anymore since Dale's gone. So we'll be fixing some stuff up. But what you'll see in. The department administration here is just an explanation of what the IT department is now. How it works and, uh, the very last paragraph there on how funding is. It helps me to know what spending is being done for IT, no matter where it's happening, in engineering or wherever else. So there's a little bit about that. If you flip to the next page, and again, I don't expect you to, we have read through all of this text here. What we're talking about here is. Two-fold. One, what it means to have, uh, access to technology and telecom systems in the county. And when we say county, we're talking about here, this building treasurer and. This floor here and also the engineering and maintenance staff and also the registry. So that's defined. Uh, on the first page, what we mean when we say the word county. So we don't have to say. Commissioner's office and treasurer and all that stuff. So we say county, that's what we mean. Um, so what we're talking about here is what it means when we're giving you access to systems. And also, because we do want the employees to read this, there is a lot of talking in here about when you're on a county machine. You've got to understand that we may need to look at what you're doing. If you're sending an email and this is standard, anybody who's worked anywhere knows this. If you're on a county machine and you're sending stuff that's not county-related. We're not going to be monitoring this actively necessarily, but you have to understand that we might have to. There might be a public request. Something might happen that we might have to go look at. So it's spelled out that this is all standard stuff that's in this. Um. When you look at page three. We start getting into how one gets access to county systems. So we have created a form, a network access form, which we'll take a look at at the end, which is just to standardize the way you request access. Um, and all access is granted only when. I or Dan Caparata, the assistant, the deputy CIO or somebody else that we designate, looks at it. And that's primarily for. If somebody is working with another vendor or if there's a third-party contractor or something like that, we will need to vet that request. To make sure that it's okay. We don't want to have any possibility that something accidentally. Gets introduced into our systems. That's going to cause a problem later. So it's a standard form with standard justifications. Also, if somebody needs to be at home and accessing the systems, we're going to make sure that everything's okay with that. So that's buried in there on all those bullet points on page three. And on page four, you'll talk, see about remote access. On page four, you'll see some other headings there about data center security and software, hardware peripheral devices. Again, that's the stop. Uh, somebody comes in with a thumb drive, they got some stuff they brought from home. We don't want you to do that unless we've said it's okay because again, you might have some virus on something from. Your house. These are all standard security measures. We're again, just codifying it. So this, some of these policies were in place already in both places. As the director said, this is a unified security policy. Protect us and protect employees. Uh, on page five at the top, you'll see, we're talking about county websites. This is a very short paragraph because all we're saying here is. The county websites are owned and directed by their respective, uh, elected officials and their designees. So the register runs his website. That's his deal. Um, if the treasurer had his website, he would do that, the county director, and they, he runs his website. So that's there. County director and they, he runs his website. So that's there. Continuing on this page, we get into email and telecom. This is again, just a reiteration, especially in email. If you're doing something in your business email, you must be aware that it's business email. If you're doing something in there that's your own personal stuff, you know, we're not gonna be looking at every email you send, but we may have to look in there. So we talk about that in here. Again, protect yourself and protect us. That's a lot of stuff that's in there. And as you turn to the next page, the reason these aren't numbered, I'm sorry, is. The reason that these aren't numbered is that this is gonna be in the middle of our larger handbook. So I'm sorry that I keep referring to pages that aren't there. Um, we get into uh, a little piece here about how you're going to be required that you sign something that says you've read these. And we'll take a look at a, a sign off sheet so you can see what it is. Um, let's see, this is page seven. We have a very new thing that I spent some time figuring out how to write about. Generative AI. So what this means, you've heard, I assume, about programs like ChatGPT. And these are these artificial intelligence things that are on the web now. So this isn't necessarily gonna have any impact on the work that most people do here. But one of the big security things that happens is people who are using these in their work, they, to make this stuff work, you have to you have to give these things information to work on. So if you get onto ChatGPT and you say, I need to write this report for my boss, well, my boss has asked me to create something on my website. Or I need to figure out a strategic plan or something. So in order for it to do that, you have to give these things information. So what happened in a lot of companies is that employees were going on and giving information to these things that they probably shouldn't have shared. So that's the primary thing, because what happens when you give these uh, AI things information is it saves it and it shares it with whomever else might access. So all this paragraph here is saying is you shouldn't be using this for anything that uh, you shouldn't give these things anything that is proprietary information. And when I say proprietary, we don't have any information here that needs to be protected. The registry, which has a huge amount of information. All that information is public access. Uh, all the people's names and what they paid for their houses and all that. So that's all public access. So we don't have to worry about that. But you shouldn't be feeding that stuff into these databases. So all that stuff there is really just talking about when you can use this, uh, these kinds of applications. And it's not just on the websites anymore. Microsoft is putting all of this stuff directly into their applications. It's going all over the place. You're gonna be going onto a website now in, uh, in a few years, no, sorry, a few months. You'll go to the search engine and these things will pop up to try and help you. So we felt it was really necessary to put in some information here on when and when not to use these things. Uh, if you jump to page eight, we get into when you should be using cell phones. This is section four. Again, it's all standard stuff, but we want to talk about it. And an important thing here is we do have employees who are driving as part of their job. So uh, we have uh, information here about you cannot be texting on the phone. You really have to use hands free. And we included a reference to the Massachusetts state law there. So that people really know, we're not just arbitrarily saying what you can and can't do. It's the state law that you cannot be holding your mobile device. You gotta use hands free and you cannot text. Um, and then there's also a little practical thing in there to tell them what to do if they lose their cellphone. That's provided by the county. And then I don't remember all the, section five, which is almost towards the end there, hang on a second. Talks about social media. So this is, you know, your standard things, Facebook, Twitter, all that stuff. Uh, much like the websites, the social media sites are the province of their elected officials. So the registry has several social media sites. They take care of that. But this is more focused on what employees are allowed to do with it. So an employee can't go onto some Facebook site and represent themselves as a county employee or a registry employee unless they're expressly allowed to do so. They shouldn't be going on sites and using the county logo. It's very important nowadays, lots of stuff. I'm sure you've heard about it. Uh, somebody says something and then it gets taken out of context. And if they look like a county employee, then the county gets in trouble. Hey, I saw this thing. This person who works at the registry of deeds or the treasurer's office said this and they were commenting as a private individual. But then we all get in trouble. So there's a lot of talk in here about what you do on social media sites. And we get to the very last page, we're talking about security cameras. As you know, we have cameras all around to make sure that people are safe and that people's property is safe and this outlines that. And okay, that's it for the policy itself. Again, please take a look at it. Let me know if you have suggestions, corrections, anything that's bothering you. And we will take that this week. And again, it's also going to uh, the register and the treasurer and for their um, input as well. Take a look at the first attachment. It is the IT policy acknowledgement form. Instead of just something to sign. I tried to summarize the most important bullets so that I can't imagine how this would happen, but say someone decided they didn't want to read all of this fascinating stuff. They would at the very least read through these bullet points and then sign off on it. So um, I do have a slight modification to make to this, but that's the concept here. So hopefully everybody, all the employees will read that, but then they'll take a look at this again and sign off on it. One of the things alluded to in there is the network access request form, which we standardized. All this is the same, who are you? Who do you report to? Are you someone who's not an employee but a contractor or a vendor? I need to know that too. And what are you asking for access to? And then if you are an employee or a contractor and you need to connect to our network from when you are not on site. There's a remote access form here and that includes, which is very important, why are you asking for that? Why, why are you not gonna be here when you need to access our systems? And you cannot get this stuff until we have a, a signature from your department head. Or if you're a third party vendor, who is the one who is sponsoring your engagement with us? And then your last thing, and I'll spend a couple of minutes on this and then let you off the hook, is our IT password policy. Now this one I'd be interested in from you folks as users as well as commissioners. What we've got currently in place, and it's slightly different on both sides, is uh, rules on how long your passwords have to be. How often they change, how often we force you to change them. And this is, and this will standardize it. We're gonna ask everybody to go to a minimum ten character password. They will have to have capital letters and lowercase letters. They'll have to have a number. They'll have to have a symbol. And this is standard at most places.
Ten?
Uh huh. And the reason this is happening now is that the introduction of AI into this world, these, they've got AI things that are cracking passwords faster than they've ever been cracked. So, and we're gonna make you change your passwords every three months. So this is not going into place just yet. I don't know when we're gonna do this. But we will, we want you to take a look at it. And so the first part of the piece of paper is telling you what the policy is. And then the second part is giving you advice on how to create a password and remember it easily. So one of the things that we talked about in here, and this again is gleaned from a lot of looking around in the web is instead of thinking of a password, you can think of a passphrase. So passphrase makes it much harder for people to crack. So one of the things we have on here is if you uh, if you like going on vacation, you can naturally put spaces into your password. Uh, I love to vacation in Florida every Christmas. So you leave the spaces or instead of spaces, you put in a symbol in between an asterisk or whatever. And this is all in here. There's several different ways to make your passphrase memorable, but almost impossible for the hackers to get through it. Even if they're using an AI thing. So you take a look at that, let me know what you think. We expect that we'll get a bunch of feedback on this. And we have ways to help people remember their passwords, how they do it, all that stuff. But this is to stop people from uh, having passwords that are too guessable or too crackable. And this is uh, just for getting into the network. Not worried about people's um, application passwords yet. Uh, part of it that's not mentioned only briefly down here too is for our cyber insurance policy. The carrier has asked us to put in multi-factor authentication on some of our most important applications. So multi-factor authentication, you know, it's not just your password. You put your password in and then the application sends you something else, like to your cellphone or to your email. You probably run into this with your banks or something.
Yeah.
So you log in and it says, is this you? If it is, you've got to put in this code or something else.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be putting that into place on our VPNs, the thing that lets you connect to home. And also probably with Outlook at some point and some of the other ones.
We're gonna have a secret uh, question thing too.
Well, I don't know if we'll do that. But we'll be rolling that out as well. So I gave you a whole bunch of information to digest. Apologize for ramming that down your throat, but they, they up the things to remember. This is our attempt to consolidate the policies across the county and maintenance and and the registry to make us more secure, to help the employees know what is safe for them to do and what's not. And all we need from you to take a look in the next week and get me directly, any feedback, any concerns, anything like that. And we'll get it back in front of you for approval. And again, uh, we're gonna give other folks a chance for their input as well.
So this is gonna be solicited, sent out to the department.
That's right.
Okay. Any other, any questions of Sam? This is really a
Pretty thorough.
An in-depth and we definitely need to.
Many people help, so that's why we're on a covered basis.
We need to take an advisement with an aim, aim towards getting it past this, you know.
I'm just curious, was this also something that was cited in the Abraham's report? Was there something that had said that we should have a policy or whatever and we're following up on that?
I don't know if it was.
Not in the Abraham's.
It's pretty standard. I mean, all, most places have, I, I can't think of any place that unless it's too small, doesn't have a policy on these things. I mean, there's some variations, but you have to tell people, here's how you get on the network. You should have a password like this. You know, this is why we have.
How do you want it though? I mean, I know the rule is the rule and I understand it, being in the public sector. But how do you, you have so many people that might use a flash drive and then how you, unless something happens?
So we can, there is a way to stop that from happening when they're on the network, but I don't know. We, I, I, we have very good employees here.
Okay.
I'm not worried about that. The, most places have, like if you work for a healthcare company or something like that, where you have, have HIPAA violations. Those places, well, the computers don't have a USB interface. You can't put it in or they tape it off or they disable it. So if we were really worried about it, we could do that. Um, yeah, you have software that if you try to put it in, stop it. We're not there yet. This is advisory. People, I don't see people coming in and dropping stuff on there. Uh, in the old days when people had to take work home, they put the thing in and put the work on. So we don't worry about that here as much. And plus our employees. I, I feel like you tell them why you're asking them not to do it, they won't do. But we, you can do that stuff. You can lock down, you can go to zero trust, it's called. Don't let anybody do anything. Don't give them the chance to mess up. We're not there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm available for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Um, good work. It was a very important document. We have, I'd like to take a motion and take it under advisement. We've been showing the name towards getting it done. This month, second motion made in second, take this under advisement, all of you.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along. Number thirteen, Parac agreement. In your packet, I see a letter here. And that's the director explained. I think it's a yearly occasion of the yearlies.
It is. The uh, the treasurer um, has asked for your endorsement of this agreement uh, between the executive office, administration, finance, retirement board. Parac, which is the Public Employee Retirement Commission and yourself and the treasurer. This endorsement is required each year. Uh, relative to the agreement that was placed in your packet. I'll circulate to the Commissioner stating the signature page. For consideration of signature, if there's any questions, I'll try to do my best. This is on behalf of our vacationing Deputy Treasurer Joe DiOrio.
One please, Dave.
I've got one signed.
Uh, yes, sir. Sorry? Yeah, this has all the signatures on it. That's, that is a complete, this one.
This is, this is my copy of it.
Yeah.
Okay, this, we do this every year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're a joke.
Yeah, motion, Mr. Chairman, or?
I believe we do.
Yes, sir.
Move approval of the agreement. Uh, the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, the Norfolk County Retirement System and its actuary, Republican Party Retirement Commission, PRAC, Norfolk County Treasurer and Norfolk County Vice Commissioners uh, to the memorandum that was produced and executed this date eight, two, twenty three.
May I add um, pursuant to general law sixty four D section eleven?
So take that as a friendly motion.
Right.
Second, motion made second, all in favor. It is a vote. That's parry, number fourteen. A letter from DCAM regarding nine, six dash ten, Mayor McGrath, Iowa, Quincy, Mass. Have a copy here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May?
Go ahead, Derek.
Good. Um, each of you received a letter from oh, it's in your packet. Do you have it? From the Division of Capital Asset Management Maintenance, as you know, the Commonwealth is moving to try to secure additional property and around the existing Quincy District Board footprint. Um, they are moving to uh, purchase, uh, or try and purchase the property located in six dot ten Mayor McGrath Highway in Quincy. I think it's also known as the McIntyre Building. On this letter is pursuant to general law, chapter seven, C, section thirty seven, which requires you as a local unit of government to sign off that you're aware um, of this proposal. It's the same agreement you signed on March twenty third, when the Commonwealth is attempting to purchase the, the court from you. So it is super funtry, but it's required. Um, you will uh, take your signatures and send them along to the respective uh, contacts at DCAM for them to behave with the procurement file on our property. Um, there are three letters, so I'd like your signatures on each of your individual letters.
Okay, great.
Mr. Collins, I'll give you this.
I don't think I have one.
Any, any other discussion?
Check in a box off, right?
That's correct.
More or less, it's just, yeah.
Do you have the one for your signature?
I don't think I have. Thank you.
And I have one for you, Commissioner Jack.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's just, do I, I print my name and assign it here?
Please, thank you.
Okay.
I'll scan and get the back to Heidi Green.
I have a question about this.
My name, yeah, I've got a signature title question.
Oh, wait, okay, thank you.
If during the uh for the developments at that site, they realize they're gonna need other properties on the other side. Is we'll be signing one of these each time? That happens, okay.
Yes, because it's within your jurisdiction.
That's correct, okay.
Gotta give them credit, right? They're not wasting time, right?
Yes, sir. They will need the property obviously to uh, be up with the footprint design of uh, parking and building their plant.
I did talk to the mayor today and they, they're, they're in negotiation. They're gonna, they're gonna sell it now. I didn't get the particulars, but they're, they're seem to be making progress, which means they're talking about the P word, parking.
Of course.
Right.
Okay.
I guess two. Okay. We had no bid openings today at one thirty. That's number thirteen. Number, number fifteen, number sixteen contractual awards, we have none. Number seventeen, report with the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few items. Um, this past week, um, I um, spoke with Treasurer O'Brien from the county. We see a need to schedule an upcoming county commissioners meeting. It's been a while. Probably the last meeting was in Barnstable this past spring. Um, we'd like to see if the commissioners are interested in a September meeting on either September sixth or seventh. Um, Treasurer O'Brien was kind enough to inform me that it's all for its turn to host. So good. So I confirmed the availability of the meeting room um, at the agricultural school we last met. Mr. Mark claims both days are available for uh, county commissioners meeting with the other county commissioners. We're glad we can set an agenda and get that out to you, but I want to check on the dates with each of you now. That's a Wednesday or Thursday.
Date again?
Six or seventh of September.
September, huh?
Time for you to set this, with this kind of notice, I don't know any problem.
Either one's found me.
Yeah, I'm set.
Yeah.
Great. And I'll, then I'll send out an agenda to you folks out right here from town.
Yeah.
Uh, commissioners should be advised that the HR specialist vacancy um, created when Marion moved on um, is being actively interviewed for. We saw two candidates this past week. We are seeing a third this week. Uh, the first two are exceptional, strong candidates. We're very happy with both of them. Um, so we're in a good space. Um, as we approach the third interview, hope to have some um, relevant hiring um, news for you within the next week or so. We'll, we'll keep you advised. Um, I'm awaiting uh, the audit results from Lynch Marini. Um, I had a meeting with them on July twelfth about some closing questions, concerns they had relative to their product for the FOI twenty one audit. Uh, we've responded to that. I called the principal, Robert Lynch, this morning to determine when we might expect it. Um, they've been very patient working with Norfolk County over the last several years, as you know. Um, and I expect them to uh, turn around with me and provide a date soon when we can accept the audit uh, from them uh, for that particular. from them for that particular time period at FY twenty-one. The commission should be advised, I forwarded them a copy of the twenty twenty-three ARPA recovery report that was received from Clifton Larson and posted on our website. We prepared the same report last year. But last year you've been very busy. You've added a lot more of those approved grants to the report. It's a forty-eight page document that I thought was an exquisite document that really shows in its variety and in its detail, the use of the ARPA funds across the county. Each of the counties that are using Clifton Larson under this model have the same report. There's a sort of synthesis, if you will, to the county government across Massachusetts showing publicly the use of these funds at such a, such a detailed and interesting rate. I paged through it last year, it was nice. But reading forty-eight pages and over eighty million dollars worth of money is quite impressive. And hope you, hope you've each had a chance to look at it. We do, I did talk to Commissioner, excuse me, Treasurer O'Brien about having Clifton Larson create a synthesized or consolidated report once we're done with ARPA on behalf of all of the county's work that could be used to promote the benefit of county management across Massachusetts to stakeholders, including the legislature and governor's office. Clifton Larson's done exceptionally good job on it. We've worked very well with them in the last couple of years and they have to give them a lot of credit. They're great to work with. Commissioners are reminded tomorrow morning, they will be invited to join Robert Pearson and the RSVP program for a luncheon at the Indianapolis States. The proceedings start just before noon. Commissioner Shea and I are planning to get down there around eleven fifteen.
I think it's one o'clock. Thanks for the heads up. Is it twelve o'clock?
Believe it is.
It is.
I have one.
Go to the face. I got a sheet here I want to share with you when we're leaving.
So twelve o'clock then?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. Geez, it would have been late time. Can't probably make.
The commission should be advised that all the direct reports of mine, we've completed the past year performance evaluations and have planned the upcoming goals for each respective department. That as well, the process continues along, it's great to talk with each of them when they come in, check in on their, their wants, needs and ideas for goals. It was a collaborative process. Most of the departments came in with their own ideas, which I embrace. A couple, I, I am part of my own on, so overall it's a helpful program to make sure we're all moving in the same direction. Incidentally, I did speak with Commissioner Shea today. He and I are going to meet next week to do my performance evaluation and later down the road, you might want to review that at your leisure. And just a final reminder, Commissioner Stadia, if I'm wrong, please correct me. August sixteenth is the upcoming date for a meeting at the agricultural school for the trustees. But from last week's meeting, we understand the commissioners do have an interest in possibly also having their meeting that week.
Right.
Two weeks from today at the school, the only thing we'll have to work on is the timelines.
I think we had talked about what a possibility would be. You spoke, I spoke to John Martin yesterday about that, have the commissioners meeting at nine o'clock.
And then go right into the day.
And then after that, we adjourn and then open up the trustee meeting. We have some business that has come about recently over the past few days. And Mr. Martin has now told me that it may preclude the strategic planning he had hoped to do with us. And he's got a volume of things he wants to talk to us as trustees. And he figures by the time that is done, could be several hours. He may not be feared everybody, get into adjourn and have strategic planning and have us get out of there at four o'clock. So he's weighing the option. I'm going to call him tomorrow and talk to him about that. But some things on there he says.
But it's fair to say, we're, we're, we're going to be there on the sixteenth.
So we're there at sixteen and then the trustee meeting will be advertised for like, I think I had nine forty-five or ten o'clock.
So we're going to start at nine?
Right.
Okay, I think that's right. I'd rather cancel the meeting.
That gives us enough time?
Alright.
There enough time for the commission?
I believe it is.
Do we have to? Okay.
Okay, no.
I might even, I might even bring coffee and donuts, how's that?
That's fine. We've got the new chef is there. I don't know if he's working by next, by August sixteenth.
Sounds good.
That's all I have. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have anything else under emergency items. And if anyone does now, it's time to come up with it. Again, before we take it German, I want to ask everyone to remember Barry Hannan and his family. They're great folks and we were waiting two or three days for the obit, but it is out. It's in today's media, Patriot Ledger particularly. It appears that Barry is going to be waked on Cape Collin in North Falmouth and buried at the Bourne National Cemetery next Monday. So we will make some plans to have some representation there. I know I'm going to be there. I'll be on the way down, the way back. It's Monday and then Tuesday morning, church in North Falmouth and then over to Bourne. So I did mention that Barry is a veteran of the United States Air Force, so very, very suitable in, in becoming. And I just want to make sure that we notify today now that this is a a lightbulb net of the passing of the rest. Okay, I have nothing else. I have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn at two oh three. Yes, Jim?
Second, wish made in second and all favor. Bye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. You want a copy of that? No, just checking out. Barry, should we send something or?